Ready?
Yeah.
You're good. May I have a motion to return the special board meeting to public session? Dr. Spicer, Ms. Pullen, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. All, I call the special board meeting and budget hearing to order. All board members except Dr. Litman are present.
Same.
Sorry. Oh, and Mr. Billen, I thought he said. Right. All board members accept Dr. Litman and Mr. Billen are present. Ms. Blackinger will lead us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that in the event of fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all emergency exits evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request everyone turn their cell phones and other electronic devices to silent. Thank you. Dr. Brownhall?
Thank you very much, President Singh. So tonight, we are recognizing an extraordinary music teacher, who has been honored for excellence in music education by the Buffalo Philharmonic Orchestra and the Erie County Music Educators Association. Williamsville North Orchestra Director, Mr. Joe Buckle, has helped expand music education in the district, impacting hundreds of students over the course of his career. After more than thirty years of dedication, he is also retiring at the end of this school year. I'd now like to welcome Principal Bob Cuniglio and Director of Music Jamie Putnell, along with teacher extraordinaire, Mr. Joe Buckle, as we recognize him tonight.
Hi, good evening. It's always exciting when we get to come together to celebrate the talent, creativity, and excellence found within the Williamsville School District. We are privileged to spend every day working with young artists, young entrepreneurs, young musicians. And while our students inspire us to do what we do every day, it is our teachers who dedicate themselves to teaching and inspiring those students to pursue those talents, be creative, and be great. Tonight, it is an honor to stand here to celebrate a teacher who has done just that every day for the past thirty-two years here in Williamsville, Mr. Joe Buckle. Since nineteen ninety-five, the Buffalo Philharmonic Orchestra and Erie County Music Educators Association have been presenting an award that honors outstanding music educators in the Western New York area. The purpose of the award is to recognize and honor those who make possible the progression from the very first note a student gets to make to the last musical phrase performed at their last concert on their high school stage, as students are nurtured in the musical art. Once nominated, award recipients are selected by a committee comprised of ECMEA and Buffalo Philharmonic members. This year, I'm proud to share our very own Joe Buckle is the recipient of a 2024 BPO ECMEA Award for Excellence in Music Education. In a district known for its excellence in music education, our sixteenth year consecutively as a best community in music ed, Joe is now our twenty-first music educator in Williamsville to receive this award. In the last few years, I've had the privilege of watching Joe inspire students to achieve exemplary levels of musical excellence, with a strong history of receiving the highest honors at local and state festivals and competitions. I watched students walk away from performances glowing with pride, and the same glow is on Joe's face, too. He's clearly excited to see his students succeed and thrive, and that success is rooted in your empathy and support, coupled with high expectations and standards for just musical greatness. I couldn't think of a more deserving person as this year's recipient. You're leaving quite the legacy behind here in Williamsville, and your students, colleagues, and district are lucky to call you our own. Please join me in celebrating and congratulating Joe.
Good evening, I just want to add a couple of points. We always talk about the ripple a puddle can leave in the water. People don't realize that Joe Buckle, for ten years, taught all three high school orchestra programs and grew it into three. So every student that's currently in orchestra can trace their roots back to Joe. So for ten years, he did twenty-one thousand extra miles going between schools every day. Did you put in for mileage? Okay. The deadline was two thousand fourteen, sorry. But so Joe did that. He put in the extra time, and he created programs that got large. At North itself, he now has two orchestras that he conducts. He is also, we talk about a model for students. Joe is a model for, I would say, for our young educators. He is a staple at every event. He does our Pitt Orchestra. He did it at East Prior. He is at our outdoor dance, at our proms. At our, any activity we have, our senior activities, Joe shows up for graduation to volunteer. He is always around the students, and he sets a great example for our younger staff. What I want to point out about Joe is how he still has that energy. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we know Joe is retiring. We send out something to all faculty, parents, and students called the virtual high five. We send it out via WITS, and they can virtually high five a staff member. And this is what someone wrote, some parents wrote about Joe this week. "We just want to thank you for giving Sam the opportunity to experience the joy of being part of full orchestra. She loved every single," because that was capitalized, "minute of it. In the mornings before she goes into school and noses a practice, she'll say with a big smile on her face, 'Yes, I have full orc today.' She really is sad because you will not be here in her last year of high school, but she will take your tremendous influence into her senior year and then further onto college. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and happy retirement." To say that about a thirty-two-year veteran is just truly a testament to the outstanding work Joe does. So congratulations, Joe.
Would you like to say anything, Joe?
Well, I guess, since I have the mic, I don't have many pieces to tell you about tonight. But, but I appreciate all the support over the years, all the, the school boards, the previous superintendents. And I would say, the evidence of the support is, throughout the district, is the, the music additions that we got a couple of years ago at all three high schools. And it, it really showed, showed us, and I think our, our entire department, how you value what we do. And I appreciated that, and it really, I think, has helped the program grow and sustain, because the kids, you know, at the high school level, just, level, just are enthralled with that facility. And so it was great to see that come to life. And yeah, it really has grown since I first started in the district, but it really has been because of the support from our music coordinators, our, our school board, all the support that we've gotten. We get support from parents, of course, and the students that we teach, but to have support and the backing from, from the administration helps as, as a part of all the success, I think. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we do just have a little video presentation.
Hi, my name is Joe Buckle, and I am this year's recipient of the BPO ECMEA Excellence in Music Education Award. Receiving this award is an honor, especially because it's given by two organizations that I'm very involved with, the BPO and the ECMEA. It means a lot, because it is a county-wide award, and a lot of my colleagues have received it, so it's nice to, to join them in this award. When the intensity builds, the two-eighth notes start to rush. The da, da, okay? Discipline on those two-eighths. He's so involved in the school. I think he's definitely deserving the award, just, just because he really goes above and beyond in terms of how he kind of treats all the students and how fair he is. For Joe to be able to receive that this year is long overdue. I can't think of a better time, a better recipient than Joe. He's the only single North Orchestra Director we've ever had in North's history. And the North Orchestra Program is Joe Buckle. It's never been about orchestra or chorus. It's always been about the kids and about the music program. It's so rare that you could work with somebody like Joe, who is just so incredibly devoted to his position, devoted to his students. It's been really fantastic.
I'm just very grateful to have had Mr. Buckle all this time. Like, everything he does is for us, and he, I just feel like he respects the student body so much, and he understands that, you know, as much as we get out of him, I would hope at least that he gets something out of us in teaching us. So we're very, very grateful to have Mr. Buckle.
He has a very unique way of being strict, yet compassionate at the same time. Being encouraging, as well as demanding that students perform to their very best, and he always seems to find a way to get the best out of them. It's broadening their horizons and possibilities of just, again, what musical excellence is. And also, they just become good humans, right? They take on his listening spirit, his nonjudgmental self, all the things that are so great as an educator, but as a human being. And it's just great to see the kids start to reflect that along the way.
He's very understanding. Like, of course, he knows what he wants in his classroom, but there's also that level of, okay, maybe you don't know how to play this part, or you don't know what that note means. Let's figure it out, and let's get it the best we can for the concert.
Here at North, I'm, I'm very proud of the kids. They're so talented here. And they're playing, they're getting to play music that the Philharmonic plays or the community orchestras play. They're at that high level. And so, being able to perform that music, it's a love of mine, but I'm happy they get to experience that as well, that love. It just kind of goes at an easy pace that allows us to slowly progress. And by the time we make it to the concert, we don't even realize that we've been kind of made so much progress and advancements, and we're ready to perform.
It's so rewarding. He is phenomenal teacher, great person. He's amazing, and I couldn't have asked for a better orchestra director.
Thank you.
I don't know. That's, that's the concert, I know that.
I turn it back over to you, Board President Singh.
Thank you. Any other board acknowledgements?
As Principal Cuniglio mentioned, this was Teacher Appreciation Week, so I just wanted to acknowledge all of the teachers that work in our district to help create the educational excellence throughout and offer all the hard work that they put in every day to help for student, student success. So, thank you.
It's also Nurses Week, so school nurses get a shout-out, too.
Oh, yeah.
Just to add on to Williamsville's musical excellence, last Thursday, South had a jazz performance with the middle schools and the high schools, and that was the first time I attended that, and it was outstanding. So it's just nice to see all of the opportunities that we offer our students in our district for music.
Okay. Moving on now, we have a motion to approve the minutes from April sixteenth. Agenda item four A and the preschool special education report in agenda item five A has presented. Ms. Pullen and Mr. Manor, any discussion? All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. And moving on to President's report, the onboarding committee met on April eighteenth, and the board retreat was held on April twenty-fourth. The upcoming meeting with Saayak is on May twentieth, and the building visits are on June fifth at Dodge Elementary and the District Office. At this time, I call on the district clerk Lynn Carey to share information regarding the annual vote.
Thank you, Dr. Singh. Hello, everyone, good evening. This year, in regard to board candidates, we have six candidates this year for three positions. And for more information about the candidates, Nick Filipowski has done a wonderful job with getting this information out on our website and in publications, and also with the help of David, Lori, and Amy. Thank you all for getting that together. After this meeting, there will be a candidate's night, so stay tuned for that. It's a separate livestream. So that is in Board Docs and on the district YouTube channel. In regard to absentee early vote ballots, those are available now. If you have any questions, please reach out in a phone number or email to me. And once the application and the ballot is requested, there's several ways of, and options to return them to me. They all have to be back by five PM on May twenty-first. And then, a vote day, it's May twenty-first, from seven AM till nine PM, Williamsville North High School Gymnasium. So, any questions? That's it for me. Any questions from the board regarding any of that? Okay, thank you. We'll see you all on the twenty-first.
Thank you, Ms. Carey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Dr. Brownhall, back to you for the presentation.
Thank you very much, President Singh. I'd like to welcome our Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Management Services, Mr. Kelly, to his first board meeting. So, welcome, Mr. Kelly. Tonight's presentations, the budget presentation and the elementary air conditioning supplemental proposition will be done by Assistant Super, interim, former Interim Assistant Superintendent Tom Matusky. This is Tom's last budget hearing, and we thank him for all his work. So, Tom, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Brownhall. So, today, we will be reviewing the budget presentation. This presentation has been presented several times over the course of the budget development process. I'm going to review the key items that are pertinent to the May twenty-first vote. And we're going to begin with some familiar information that has been, again, provided in January, February, March, April, and now culminates with today's presentation. The information here is really set up into two sides. The right side is related to our long-range planning as we go through a budget development process. I'm not going to key in on any of that tonight. I think that's there for anyone for reference. But the important item I want to share is, we're always looking at the future when we develop a current-year budget. So, looking at the budget that will be voted on on May twenty-first is on the left side. And it really, this particular report is sharing information that is necessary to continue our current programs. So the programs that are going on in this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, these are the type of expenses that we need to continue with those programs. The majority of this is related to salary and benefits. We have salary increases of a little bit over two-point-eight million, and that number has been reduced through our budget development process due to retirements and other information we received. So it was much higher at the beginning. We then move forward to other benefit items. The social security tax, which is required, health insurance, that number of an increase is a little over two-point-four million. And again, that was reduced pretty substantially as we got more information in on the trending increases in our health insurance. And our district is self-insured, so this represents actual payments we make throughout the school year. And again, this is the increase that we need in that budget. Our BOSI's budget supports many items, many programs. It's some student programs that were there attending BOSI's programs, such as occupational technology programs, as well as special ed programs. And there's a lot of support services that we purchased through Erie One BOSI's that is really assisting the district in complying with New York State law. As a result, I also want to point out that we get state aid on the BOSI's budget, about sixty-two percent of our expenses, which occurs in the succeeding year. Our transportation increase, this is the first year of a five-year contract. It is an increase. It's a pretty substantial increase. However, this is another area where we get state aid based on actual expenses. So although the increase is high in our budget, we should receive an increase in our revenue in the succeeding year. And lastly, on this page, we have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase in our cybersecurity efforts. We have a very strong cybersecurity program, and this is just to continue to maintain that and improve our threat resistance. So that results in an overall increase for the program continuation expenses of nine-million-three-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand-fifty-one dollars. It provides a four-point-one-nine percent budget increase at this point. So, moving to the next piece, we want to talk about what we would consider program enhancements. And early on in our process, we focused in on our special education program. The board in the community is aware that there was a special education review that occurred in the prior fiscal year, the prior school year. And so we were implementing some special education classes that would be at the high school and elementary school. We initially were going into really a four-class-type increase, and as the actual enrollments came in, we were able to reduce that to three, but that provided us an opportunity. And part of the, the report that we received was to increase behavioral technicians in our district, which is a truth benefit to our students. So we were able to add this in ahead of schedule. So that results in five-hundred-nine-thousand-two-hundred-fifty dollars. And so, moving then forward to the next piece, which is what we do to try and mitigate some of the increases. And that was done through, again, looking at what we were able to accomplish in a, in a prior year, and how it reflects to the current year, and how that reflects to the future year. And due to board education allowing and approving a paydown of some debt in the prior year, we were able to do a reduction in our debt service model, and that reduction is done to reduce the amount of the paydown, and that effect resulted in five-hundred-twenty-five-thousand dollars in savings. So looking at this from a total perspective, again, you have a nine-million-three-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand-fifty-one-dollar increase. That's for our program continuation. We have five-hundred-nine-thousand-five-hundred-twenty dollars, which is a program enhancement for our special education program, and we have a five-hundred-twenty-five-thousand-dollar budget reduction that we included in this budget. That meant our program increase and enhancement amounts were nine-million-three-hundred-fifty-two-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-one dollars. That provided our budget that is being proposed to our community of two-hundred-thirty-two-million-seven-hundred-forty-thousand-five-hundred-seventy-four dollars, which is a four-point-one-nine percent increase. So now, we have to have a balanced budget, so we're going to look at the, the revenue side. And I'm going to begin with the tax cap calculation, which is really what governs our tax levy. I'm not going to go through this again. We provided this information several times. I just want to concentrate on a couple of main items. You see on the right side of this particular slide, a lot of these items are required and provided to the district by outside groups, New York State in particular. So, in this situation, we have a growth factor that is multiplied by our prior-year tax levy. That's provided by the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance. And that really is to provide us with what assessment growth happened per their record. So that's what that represents. The CPI, you can see, is two percent. That is really where you get the phrase, "There's a two-percent cap." That is in this formula. And then, lastly, you see that there was a one-million-eight-hundred-fifty-three-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-six-dollar carryover. And that is due to the fact that in the prior year, this twenty-three, twenty-four year, we received a lot of New York State aid. And so, we actually did not assess or levy to the community the maximum amount that we could. So that's why we had a carryover. So what this is really showing is, our district could have had a tax levy increase of five-million-six-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand dollars, or four-point-zero-four percent. But what we are proposing in this budget is something considerably less, four-million-one-hundred-fifty-five-thousand, or two-point-nine-seven percent. And that is one-million-five-hundred-four-thousand below what would be our, our tax levy cap. So, the only pieces I want to just describe very briefly on the left side is, you see, as we developed the budget, we actually had a higher levy increase as we got our state aid in and we looked at other items. We were able to make a one-point-three-million-dollar reduction in the tax levy, and that was what brought us down to the two-point-nine-seven percent increase. And then, again, we have one-million-five-hundred-four-thousand below what we could have, and this is, really represents about twenty-six-point-five percent below of what this district could have levied to our community as far as a tax amount. The total revenue picture is displayed here, and you can see all the details. I'm just going to highlight the major items. And so, state aid increase is almost four-point-nine-million dollars. We have a sales tax increase of one-million-two-hundred-fifty-thousand, and we have interest earnings of two-million-eight-hundred-sixty-thousand. We then have some reductions. The New York State Comptroller's report that we received in the prior year had recommended that we make some adjustments in the appropriated fund balance and in the reserve appropriations. Last year, even prior to receiving that report, we were already starting to do that. This year, we continued with that by reducing the fund balance by one-million-three-hundred-twenty-four-thousand and the reserves by two-million-nine-hundred-fifty-thousand. So again, going back to what the levy increase is, it's two-point-nine-seven percent. And if you were to compare that to what the CPI is for New York State, it's four-point-one-zero percent. So every year, we really try to provide our community with what the impact would be on tax rates and what it might be to an assessed value of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. This year is a little bit unique, because we have two towns, Amherst and Clarence, which make up the majority of our tax levy and the assessed values of our district. They're going through reassessments. And so, this particular information is here to show you that if all things are equal and assessments don't change, they just go up to the fair market value, what happens? And so, the key items I want to share is that the tax rate from twenty-three to twenty-four goes down. So it went from eighteen-eighty for Amherst down to eleven-ninety-seven, and then the rate change was a minus-six-eighty-four. Similarly, if you look at Clarence at the bottom, it's going down two dollars and fifty-nine cents. You can see what the percentage changes are. The middle one, Chickewauga, is, at this point, is not expected to change. So the estimated rate change is the same as the tax levy, which is what should make sense. That's what it should be. One thing I want to point out is, and especially when it comes to the next slide, we do not have final assessed value. we do not have final assessed valued numbers. So, making these calculations, it's done with no changes from the prior year's information. It's not done with new information. So, these numbers will change. The tax rates that are estimated here are estimates, they will not be the final rates. So, going to what this would show using that prior information, what it would mean to an estimated tax for a $250,000 home, you can see that it would be about $2,992. And in effect, for those properties, there really would be not a significant amount of change other than 2.97%. And the point I also want to share on here is at the center. The way the equalization rate formula works is really displayed here. Since Amherst and Clarence, now the assessed value for the current year is at a fair market value 100%, $250,000 is $250,000 in the formula. In Chictawaga, you can see that 227,500 would be what would be on their assessed value. The equalization rate is 91%. So, then, when that multiplies throughout, that's why you have a little bit of a higher tax rate. That's to equalize everything out. So, if one town has a different equalization rate, you're not paying more than what your fair share should be. So, what this shows as far as a summary here is that our proposed budget is $232,740, or $232,740,574. As I've said, 4.19% increase. Our tax cap would be at 4.04. And yet, our actual levy is at 2.97. We're significantly under the level by that $1,504,000 amount. We have a substantial New York State aid increase this year. And, and again, I would caution that it's probably the last year you're going to see a significant increase like this based upon what we're hearing from New York State. That's 4.9 million approximately. And this budget is balanced, and it also is looking at long-range planning.
Awesome. Tom, thank you very much. And thank you for explaining the program enhancement page because I know there would be questions about why we went from four additional self-contained classes down to three. And it was very clear in here that the cohort numbers do not support a fourth class. But we did hear in the special education review, the need for additional behavior tax. And that's we will use that money for. So, thank you very much for that, Tom.
Question. I'm just wondering if you recall what our tax levy increase was last year?
Last year, I, I have to go back and look, to be very honest. I think it was somewhere around 3%. No, you know what? It was actually, I think, believe it was 2% last year. Yeah, it was 2%, I believe. I can verify it and send some information to the board, but I believe it was 2%.
Really a question and comment about, you know, an issue we talked about a few months ago, which is the veterans' tax exemption. And Mr. Matusky sent an impact of the district increasing that veterans' tax exemption. So, if my, if my numbers I'm reading, if I'm understanding them correctly, we could increase the veterans' exemption by 50%. So, those who qualify would have their assessed value reduced by the $9,000, $6,000, or $30,000. And the impact to the non-veteran taxpayer would be just one additional cent. Currently, our program is a one cent difference, one cent across the non-veterans taxpayers. If we went increased by 50%, it'd only be an additional penny.
That's approximately what it would be from the calculations that I reviewed correctly.
Can't do it for, as soon as we could do it is the 2526 tax bill.
That is correct because I spoke with Erie County Real Property Tax. And they indicated that they would need to receive the information by March 1st of a given year. So, that would be the next time. So, that would be the 2526 tax levy.
So, do we need some kind of resolution in order to codify this?
Yes.
For the next meeting?
Yep.
Thank you.
Tom, you could also send to the board the dollar amounts.
Sure. The exemption dollar amounts, I'll, I'll send that to everybody.
But just to be clear how it works, it reduces the assessed value on the property of the veterans.
Correct. It, it is an exemption amount that will show on their tax bill. So, if they had, you know, a $250,000 home, that additional exemption would show up on their tax bill.
So, it'd be, because they're currently, they're receiving a $6,000 exemption. So, their assessed value is reduced by 6,000.
Correct.
Currently, we're proposing to add another 3,000 to make it 9,000.
Correct.
They'd pay less because it's reducing their assessed valuation for tax purposes.
Yes.
They're not saving $9,000.
That is correct.
I've had people out there asking me, that just reduces the assessed value, which they pay slightly, well, a little less taxes.
I know a lot of school districts deal with this. As you mentioned with the New York State aid increase, probably not increasing next year. That'll be in future plans though, because we have to be prepared for that, correct?
Yes. What we will be looking at is certainly internally at our budget. We look at what we can do to provide more savings. We certainly will look at what the aid projections were. I mean, I would not expect no increase, but I think they'll be restrained. So, we'll, again, every budget process is unique and developed independent. But it's always looking, as I have said here, at the future. And so, this budget is some areas in it that I think could be accessed to provide some savings for the future.
And I only ask that because I know that's, you know, be on the board a couple of years, that's what you do. And I just want our constituents to see that it's a multi-year planning by Mr. Matusky. Make sure we don't run into problems that you see like in West Seneca or other districts, unfortunately, so.
But what we will significantly need next year is board advocacy also. Because as you know, in the governor's budget, she did allocate $2 million to the Rockefeller Foundation for them to look at a new foundation aid formula. And those recommendations will be at the governor's desk on December 1st. So, we need to make sure with those recommendations are put through that we have proper advocacy for districts similar to ours.
And one last question, at least for me, is assuming the budget process, I mean, the budget vote goes through and it's approved, and so is the proposition, so is there a plan to start putting money back in the capital reserve fund?
Yes, there's always a plan to put money into our capital reserve every single year. And we would be, that's the number one priority for this school district. It always has been. Because that, as you all know, being on the board, that is how we're able to do all the construction work, including what was recently mentioned by Mr. Buckle, the music project, without having to have an increase to the annual budgets. And, and that is somewhat unique to our school district because many districts will use the state aid they receive to offset increases in the debt service. That's not something that is not a bad idea. But it's more powerful when you don't have the debt and you can maintain your debt service level as we have and still do all these projects.
I think the music budget came, came under the budget, right?
It came under the budget. I think we were about $2.5 million under the proposition amount in the end, correct?
Yes. Thank you.
Tom, you want to move forward with the air conditioning presentation?
Sure.
Did you have a question, Vice President?
No, I just wanted to say I looked up the levy last year was 2%.
So, speaking of capital projects, we do have a supplemental funding proposition that will be voted on on May 21st also. And so, again, this is another presentation that has been shown several times. And I'm just going to go over some of the main issues and items we want our community to be aware of. So, just to begin with, this was really an objective that was decided back in 202122. And we were just coming out of the COVID-19 health really issues. And so, one of the things we wanted to do was to think about air conditioning in every school district building that did not have it. And we wanted to also think about how can we improve our ventilation systems, increase the filtration process in them, and at the same time, think about energy savings. So, with those items, it tasked the district to go back to our professionals and come up with a plan. That plan was then really skimmed, skimmed down a bit because in reality, the initial to do all the, all the buildings that didn't have air conditioning was a number that we didn't feel could be supported by our debt service. So, as a result, we wound it with a proposition that was only going to concentrate on the air conditioning of the elementary schools. And we considered that to be phase one. It would provide the items that we said, new air conditioning, new filtration, and energy efficiency. So, that was best basically a $64,119,318 capital project approved by our voters on May 17, 2022. It was broken down into three main items. The capital reserves were going to contribute about $23.8 million. We were going to have $3 million in budgetary outlay incurring in two years as is stated there. And we were going to take out debt about $37.3 million. So, as we went forward with this, we received approval at that meeting in the 20, June, or May 20, May 2022. And it takes about a year for our professionals then to go in and do the detailed design of how you're going to actually construct the project. And so, that was done from May, basically from '22 to May '23. We then required by New York State law to submit our plans to the New York State Education Department. That was done. There's a several-month review process. And we received approval from them in October of 2023. We then went to a public vote process. And as a result, we opened bids in December 2023. And that was when we found out that we were over budget. So, at the time, we then requested at the next board meeting on January 9th, 2024, to reject all bids. We then moved forward to what do we do? And so, what we decided is, the first step is to understand why we had an overbid process when, you know, our estimates that we do throughout the entire project, when we're doing development, were within our budget. And so, it really came down to what I would say is a couple of key factors here, which are listed on this page. The number one factor is that there already was a minimal amount of construction workers in the area. But when you added these major projects that are going on with the Bill Stadium being the number one project, it resulted in extremely high cost of labor, much more than what anyone expected. And if you go back to that period of time, there was an article in the Buffalo News, we were not the only school district that had high bids that were over budget. So, with that, we moved forward to what we were going to do about it. And so, that resulted in a four-step process on our end. And that was review and redesign. So, our professional team went to see how can we lower the cost of what we put in? And it really is looking at everything. It's looking at changing the design, it's looking at removing some things from the design. It's looking at ways that we could reduce the amount of labor. You know, right from the very beginning, we had mentioned to the board and the community that this was going to be a different type of capital project because it was going to have to occur during the school year. And so, that meant we had to create a construction design and process where they were working after the school day. And so, we found that to be a very expensive item. So, we made some adjustments. We are going to use some space within the schools to alleviate some of that second shift work. And that saves us a lot of money. We also looked at changing the design, as I mentioned, using exposed duck work in the classroom. It's more of a commercial look, you see it in a lot of commercial buildings. And that really resulted in us not having to remove the suspended buildings like you see right here. And so, when you do that, it saves a lot of money. It saves a lot of additions that might come with conflicts that are above the ceiling. So, again, those were some of the items that we looked through, including, you know, removing some of the buildings for the mechanical equipment, changing the locations, and changing the design of duck work. So, again, as we go into step two, we had to be realistic. And so, we wanted to make it very transparent that we had to develop what we call bid alternates, which is items that on bid day, if the, if the costs come in over the budget, we would have areas that we were going to say, well, these are items that we would not air condition. And so, we thought that it would have, it would be gyms, cafeterias, libraries, kitchens, and then some more mechanical items. We were putting in new boilers in these schools to go with the new air conditioning system. And we would be removing them and removing the water heaters from all schools. Now, with this funding, we now believe we will be able to accomplish all of these. But we have to have them in our, if it goes forward, we have to have these alternates in as a possible ability if costs are higher than what we would expect. So, again, moving to the next phase, it is how do we fund this? And so, what we wanted to do, the number one thing was to not impact a current or future tax levy, not increase tax rates, not provide this as a burden to our community. So, we did have more capital reserve dollars. And so, we allocated them in this, and that's what is in this proposition. The one problem though with that is it is using up a majority of those funds. And so, we will have to do the saving piece to get back on track. And that will begin actually at the end of this fiscal year. So, we will start that, but it could impact a future capital project of the school district depending on what that project's timeline might be. So, again, in addition to that, we wanted additional budget outlay. And this is a $3 million request that is part of the proposition. And to provide a brief explanation, a budgetary outlay is really something that does come from our general fund, our operating fund. But this is a single-year type item. And it's available due to the fact that we're going to be transferring the amount that we had used for debt service. We have a budgeted amount for debt paydown. That saves interest charges on the ability for us to take out less long-term debt from capital projects. Since we did a paydown last year, again, board authorized. And that saved a tremendous amount of interest for our community. We have those funds available. And then, secondly, the fact that we're not doing the capital project in this coming summer means that for that next school year, we will not need these funds. However, I want to make sure that everyone understands that this is a one-year deal. And these, these dollars will then flow back to the correct paydown amount in the future. So, then, again, looking at this project, when we were going to add dollars, we wanted to do what was right for the school district and for these elementary buildings. And the initial review of these projects result in removing all of the ventilation equipment that is around the window walls. This equipment was most likely installed when the buildings were built. And there's asbestos floor tile in these classrooms. Not every single one, but there are a significant amount in the elementary school where we have that. So, the way the project worked when we developed it was we wanted to remove all that tile. But due to budget constraints, we couldn't. And so, as a result, we're only removing three feet. That was disturbed by the removal of the equipment. And then, the asbestos floor tile would have remained. This is an opportunity that we have to do it right. And so, we always want to do things right in the school district. So, we were going to remove all the asbestos floor tile in the elementary classrooms that remains. And so, we added that back into here because, again, it was the right thing to do. So, then, that brings us to what we're looking at in this proposition from a monetary perspective. Additional funds that we're requesting, $22,960,000. The board approved this action to do a proposition on May 28th. And as we all know, the vote is on May 21st. And very importantly, this does not increase the tax levy in '2425 or any future tax levy. So, what are the pros and cons of this? I think it's reasonable to, to have this discussion. Certainly, we're able to go back to what the Board of Education and the community wanted back in 2022. So, we would be adding air conditioning to the schools. We're doing it with no tax rate or tax levy increase, just as we said initially in that very first proposition in 2022. So, we're really not changing what we said to the community back then. And we also believe that this is probably the only window of opportunity that we have. then. And we also believe that this is probably the only window of opportunity that we have because as you go future, the costs are going to continue to increase, and we don't see that as being a positive impact for this type of project. And again, we're able to now address the asbestos floor tile issue. On the con side, we have to be realistic and know that we're depleting our capital reserves. So that's something we must be acknowledging. The costs have certainly increased, and we certainly want to make sure that, you know, we have a fall bid timeline. That's what we would expect to do a bid in October for this project if it's approved. And, you know, even with that, we know that the funding doesn't guarantee that all the scope of work will happen. That is why I mentioned the alternates. So I'm not going to go into, you know, the what happens if not. I think that would be a decision by the Board of Education, but I think it's likely that we would most likely abandon the capital project if this, our community does not approve it. So just here in final review, we've got a total new funding of $22,960,000. And I know I've said it probably six or seven times already, but it's worth saying again, there's no impact to the budget. There's no impact to the tax levy, the tax rate. And I would say with, you know, exclamation points, no impact to the future budgets and no added debt. So again, we've reviewed the other information here. It's the best opportunity we feel if we want to move forward with this project is the current period of time.
Any questions?
I just have one clarification. So the net amount of money they're going to be using for the capital project will be around $44 million, including what we approved in 2022, and the $37 million coming in from debt.
Correct. The 37 million is still there, and the total project would then be approximately 84 million. That would be the total budget for it.
Thanks.
I have a question. So we're still like at the very beginning of this because first we have to have it approved, then we have to have the bids come in. And if the bids come in that much more over budget than we have the money for, then this board is going to have to make a decision on what do we do?
Yeah.
Because I'm not interested, we weren't interested in overpaying to have the original project done that the voters approved the bond on two years ago. And I'm really not interested in really overpaying next year. So it's really, where the rubber meets the road, it's when the bids come in and you do it that money.
Right. That's an accurate statement. And the way I would also say is, we've had many meetings. We've discussed it. We know what our estimates are right now. We are under budget right now, I will say. We have what I would consider a reasonable budget for, including change orders. We don't know what will happen on bid day. However, we also believe that with those alternates, we're definitely going to get the project classroom air conditioning done with what we have here. And I say definite, you never can say definite to a bid process, but I think that we're in the best position we possibly can be to have this done.
Mr. Boulon has a question. I know I asked this before, but in your opinion, it's either now or never. Like, it's never going to be any cheaper. The prices are just going to go up exponentially.
Yeah.
So if we're going to do this, we should do it now.
That is 100% correct.
Thank you. I just.
Dr. Lickman, do you have a question?
No, sort of the questions are already asked, kind of covered that.
Thank you. At this time, the board welcomes anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the subject of budget to the podium at this time. Okay. All right. Oh, sorry. Go on. Could you please state your name before?
Yes, James Hanley, 51 Sable Run, East Amherst. Question I have is, what are the projections for enrollment in the elementary schools? Because is there, you know, in five, 10 years from now, is it going to be a projection where maybe we have to consolidate and therefore maybe we shouldn't have to be putting all the money into all of those elementary schools?
No, the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The projections for elementary schools, and we have our projections run every year. Last year, there was a concern thinking that we have to do additions at our buildings. The only building that we have to do additions at right now is Maple West because of the ballooning enrollment there. And so we do have four mobile classrooms that will be installed at Maple West. But when you look at our enrollment, the enrollment at the elementary buildings is where the enrollment is increasing in the district. It will be increasing, and then it will remain flat. That's why we decided not to do additions in the buildings right now, but it will be increasing and remain flat. And when you drive around our community, you do see more construction going on every day. So we do have those studies, and we get them updated every year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I just have a, it's Sarah from PTA, but I just had a follow-up question about the presentation. How many years will it take to recoup the reserve funds if we spend it for the elementary education, the air conditioning project?
The answer to that is I can't really give you a fixed years. And the reason for that is because it all depends upon every year's budget process. And what I mean by that is, a couple of years ago, we benefited from the federal grants, the ARP funds, the ESR funds. So those grants came in, and the way those programs were written is it allowed the district to use those funds for the continuation of operations, which is what our district did with the majority of those. So that allowed us, you know, to do two things. It was a long-range planning item, and that allowed us to make sure that we were securing our general fund budget for the future. So that's one reason why at this point in time for the 2425 budget, we're not seeing teacher reductions because we were able to budget that in a proper manner. And in those years, we also had a little bit more money available at the end of the year that went into our capital reserves. So we always should have some dollars at the end of every budget. Every year, we're trying to do cost savings throughout the year. It just doesn't, you know, start and end with the budget development process. It occurs throughout the year. It occurs on bids that we do. It occurs on new bids that happen. We're always looking for cost-conscious items. So as we go through a fiscal year, at the end of the year, you know, that number will change. And what we will be doing is provided that the other reserves don't require an increase, we'll be prioritizing putting the money in to our capital reserves. And another point just to make, we have a new cap reserve on the proposition for May 21 also, $39,500,000. That's extremely important to be approved because that is going to help us with what you just said, allowing us to put money away for the future. So again, I can't give you an actual timeline. It's developed on the budget, but it will probably be a number of years, but I wouldn't say it's over 10 years.
Dr. Lippin had a question.
I was going to say, you know, going in that same vein, if as our budgets each year maybe become more restrained based on state aid and other issues, it's going to take longer to replenish reserves.
I think that's the biggest con for me in this, you know, is really just drawing down on those reserves. It took, you know, a while to build up. That's, but again, it has, like Mr. Boulon said, it has to be done. It's not going to get cheaper, and it's only getting hotter. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Dr. Prabhu. I had a question. So how many teachers plus students are in the elementary school level?
I'll defer that to Dr. Brown.
I don't have the breakdown by levels right in front of me. I don't have that. I apologize.
Can we, just kind of rough figure, is it about 5,000 students or is it about?
You know, and I.
Me and Shannon just.
Yeah, give us this. We can pull that up. Give me one moment. I can go to the district stats.
And if I understood correctly, then the total cost that we're looking at right now is $84 million?
Yes.
Okay. And while they're looking that up, how many years is it expected that this equipment will last? Like, in other words, you know, it's an investment and it's going to last 10 years, 20 years? How long?
Normally, the type of, the boilers should last 20 years because they're going to be replaced in these buildings, provided we, you know, we're within budget. So that's going to be like a 20-year savings. And then the units themselves should be 15 years.
15 years?
Yeah.
Okay. And the air conditioning is in particular, it's simply just that, right? It's for the summer months and the spring months, the fall months, whenever it's hot. It's not going to, you know, be functional much in the winter, right?
That's correct.
And I don't know, I mean, I wasn't here for the original discussion, but the motivation for doing this, was the temperature in the classrooms found to be in excess of some amount for some number of days and so on?
Yes. Going back to the very initial proposition, what we had researched and what we found and heard from our community was we had, I remember specifically, I think it was probably 2020 or 21, I'm not sure which year, we had a beginning of a school in September where we had a week of 90 degrees, and that was maybe about 15 days. And it was excessively hot in the classrooms. And our buildings are all masonry. And so, you know, anyone who is familiar with the construction method knows that once they get warm, they don't get cool. And so that was part of the problem. They were holding the heat in at night. And so when they came back the next day, you know, we were trying to put fans in place and the like, and it moves air around. But again, that was following COVID-19. So the request was, well, you really shouldn't be using fans in classrooms because you're moving the air around. And, you know, with COVID-19, that was not what you're recommended to do. So again, we were coming out of that, but that was one thing that led to our thinking that, you know, it's time to look at an air conditioning project.
And I think, add to that, you know, we looked at other alternatives. We looked at like window units and floor units, and it just wasn't going to do the job. And there'd be a lot, other a lot of remedial work that would have had to be done. And, you know, I am not thrilled. I'm sure nobody is spending this much money for air conditioning, but, you know, my wife is a recently retired teacher at Maple West, and you could talk to any of the teachers and the students, and they'll tell you that there are dozens of days a year where it's just so hot that the kids don't want to learn. The kids don't want to be there. And at some point, and I think Mr. Biscalia said it, you know, we're going to have, just like you have cold days where schools close, you're going to have heat days in school when schools are closed. And living in a climate that gets really cold and then really hot, you got to try to, you know, do what you can to make the most conducive learning experience for the kids.
I understand. And so do we know the numbers?
Yep, approximately 4,000.
So 4,084 means it's about $20,000 per student. Is that right?
Well, yeah, but you have to then multiply it by 15 years.
Correct.
Because you're.
So about 1,300 per student per year. So for a classroom, is it about 20 or 15 in general?
It varies.
Yeah, about 20. Yeah, I mean, average about.
So it's about $20,000 per classroom per year for 15 years, not including the cost of operating the equipment and repairing it, right? Okay. That's, I just wanted to just check on the numbers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Moving on, today is Candidates Night organized by PTSA Council. And the annual budget vote and board member election is on May 21 at North High School in the gym from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So please come out and vote. And the next regular board meeting is on May 28. Is there a motion to adjourn the special board meeting and budget hearing? Dr. Spicer, Ms. Casparat-Borgner, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously.